Being six o'clock, I will call the Board of Selectmen's November 4th, 2024, a meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. Thank you to everybody joining us online. Please keep your phones muted unless there's an opportunity to speak on a particular subject. Thank you, everybody in person. So our first appointment's at 6:05 PM. We're going to go to other business and wait until 6:05. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $218,081.59.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will-
Two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Did I say?
Eighty-one.
Oh.
I think.
Two hundred and eighteen thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's October 21st, 2024, and October 24th, 2024, open meetings.
Um, I don't think I can.
Nope. So I'll make the motion to approve those two dates.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Beezy, if you want to take the next one for me?
Yeah, so normally we have carried a $10,000 deductible on any property loss, talking about buildings. And for 25 years, that, almost 25 years now, since I've been town administrator, we'd never actually had to process a claim. We did have a claim when there was a backup of water in a drain in the new public safety facility, and so we had to pay the $10,000. And I'm only bringing it up because I just wanted the board to be aware of where we sit with that. I can tell you, and I talked to our agent about it, if we had carried $5,000 this whole time, we would have spent a lot more than what we saved. We would have saved $5,000, we would have spent a lot more than that. So I'm just checking in with the board to make sure that you're still fine with our longstanding $10,000 deductible.
Yes.
I say we keep it. Yes.
That was it. We won't make any changes, then.
Perfect. Consider authorizing the Essex Historical Commission to submit a pre-application for the Massachusetts Historical Commission Survey and Planning Grant. Do you want to just give a little bit of history on this, or do you want me to do it?
We have the Chairman of the Essex Historical Commission interested in doing more documentation and review of historic resources within the community. He feels that since it wasn't supported at 100% funding by the town, twice running in two different town meetings, that if he makes the effort to get some grant funding, and this particular grant would pay up to 50%, that perhaps Town Meeting would feel differently because the town's money would be leveraging an equal amount of money. And so he has some ideas, and then as recently as today, after he spoke with KD at the Historical Society, since they would be partnering with the Historical Commission, he dropped the scope down to include less items. And so at this point in time, it is only a letter of interest, but it would be useful for the board to tell him whether you support him exploring this, because if they do indicate that his letter of interest is worthy of a full proposal, then he's going to have to go through a lot more work. So he's just trying to get an idea of whether you have some kind of support for this.
So he's looking for funding at the May Annual Town Meeting in 2025. Will he have heard back from Mass Historical, whether he got the grant for that, so we'll know by then, or?
He will have definitely heard back about the letter of intent.
The letter of intent, for sure, but he does have the money.
And I think that it is a, it's almost like a coterminous application period. I don't know if he will have heard back from Town Meeting, I'm sorry, from-
Okay.
-the grant maker, so that you can tell Town Meeting whether or not-
Right.
-the grant is in place.
Okay.
But it-
At this point, though, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, but it has to be, you go after this with the assumption that the town is going to approve 50% of whatever you're asking for.
Because it's a 50% match required.
Right. I'm a little bit concerned because it has not passed two times, and it got pretty heated two town meetings ago, so.
I guess my feeling, I agree with you that it's twice failed, and I think that it did get heated as well, but my feeling is you have volunteers serving on the Historic Commission that have done a lot of work, they're excited about what they've done, we appreciate their volunteerism, we don't want people to shy away from wanting to volunteer, and I think that Town Meeting is going to speak for itself. I don't think we should hinder their ability to want to move forward, I would say we embrace the fact that they've done this work, they're excited about it, we should let it go forward, and we let our form of government decide whether or not it's going to actually move to the next level. Because if they don't get a $15,000 match, that's, you know, that's the voter speaking to them not wanting to see this go anywhere, so.
And they did cut it back significantly, which could potentially make a difference there, because I think the second item that got deleted was one of the things that people were excited about at Town Meeting, or heated about at Town Meeting.
I guess it's funny that you bring the cutback. I was actually a little bit more, I was concerned about the cutback because I feel like it's a little too vague now. So I do agree with you that that's one thing that they were concerned about, but I don't like vagueness in information. And after today's email-
But that's very true, that's very-
Right, but see, then that's the thing, if the letter intent goes in with this scope, and the Mass Historical Commission says it's not enough for us to really say that we want you to spend the effort on a full proposal, then it will end at that point.
It'll end there, so.
Yeah, and he, as you know, he's already written the two-page letter of intent, which is not a lot of work, and so it's not like he has to do much more to at least see whether they'll be invited back.
Mm-hmm. So.
Shall I tell him that it's okay to submit that?
Sure, at this point, it certainly is.
I think so.
All right.
All right. It is 6:06. Chief Francis, if you'd like to join us at the podium, and you know the routine, six or eight inches away from the microphone so that we can hear you.
Good evening, all. I'd like to introduce you to Joseph Fadulo. He's a candidate for the open position that we're trying to, that we want to fill. And I'd like to introduce you to the Selectmen, Brendan and Ruth. On the left is Alva Ingaharo, she's a Selectman.
Nice to meet you.
Peter Pippin, Selectman. Brendan Zabricki, Town Administrator. Ruth Perrine, Selectman and Chair of the Board. And Pam Witham is the Selectmen's Assistant. So tonight I come before you to recommend Joseph Fadulo for the vacant full-time officer position. I come before you to request your support in appointing Joseph Fadulo to fill the vacant full-time officer position on the Essex Police Department. Joseph is 35 years of age and currently resides in the town of Tops Hill with his wife Jennifer. Joseph is a graduate of Masconoma Regional High School's class of 2007, and holds a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Anna Maria College, as well as a Master's in Business Administration, also from Anna Maria College. While working as a reserve police officer for the town of Middleton, he was enrolled in the Municipal Police Training Committee's Basic Recruit Full-Time Academy at Northern Essex Community College, graduating in 2018. Joseph comes to the department with over nine years of experience in law enforcement, having worked as a reserve in Middleton from February of 2015 to October of 2018, at which point he was promoted to full-time, working there until January of 2024. In January of 2024, he left the Middleton Police Department in furtherance of his career, and began working for Massachusetts Port Authority Police Department in Boston, where he is currently employed as we speak. After the completion of a thorough background check, by all accounts, he comes to the department highly recommended by his peers and supervisors alike. This coupled with his nine years of training and experience leads me to believe that he will be an asset and welcome addition to the department, and I respectfully request your support in supporting and appointing Joseph Fadulo to the position of full-time police officer, contingent upon successfully meeting the requirements of the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Essex Police Department.
Thank you, Chief Francis.
You're welcome.
Officer Fadulo, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
So at this point, we have your letter, your resume, as well as your letter of interest and the chief's recommendation. This is the point where the Selectmen can ask you questions and put you on the hot seat. So, Selectman Ingaharo, do you have any questions?
Why Essex?
I grew up in Middleton, grew up in Middleton, it was a small community, much like Essex was. Obviously now Middleton's a grand, a much larger town, much larger department. Town Essex kind of still has that community feel, everyone, I've worked here when I was in Middleton, doing details, overtime at local businesses and establishments, and the community seems to really embrace the police department, which a lot of communities today and the environment haven't really, it's not the same, it's more of a community feel here in the department, and I think the community get along really well, it's something I want to be a part of.
Wonderful, thank you.
Selectman Pippin?
Yes, I didn't bring your resume with me, I think it's still sitting in the printer. But there were a couple of things that you did for short term, and I believe they overlapped in 2018, you were like over-
Peter.
Here, let me see. And I'm just wondering why they were so short in nature, were they like duties that you did while you were working with the organization? Let me see if I, let me see where that was. March to October, you were investigator for industrial accidents, and February, no, that's not it. Maybe that was the only one. I'm just wondering what was going on there.
Well, so that was when I was still a reserve. My whole life goal was to be a full-time police officer.
Yeah.
So at the time, I was a reserve police officer, and I was still working a 40-hour week job for the State of Massachusetts Department, industrial accidents. So I got on the job there, and shortly after there was an opening, the Town of Middleton increased the size of the department, so it was the-
So there's opportunity.
Yeah, it was from leaving, you know, a nine-to-five to finally becoming a police officer.
Okay, thank you.
And I only have one question. You are currently employed with the Massachusetts Port Authority, and my question is, why are you choosing to leave to come to Essex? I mean, obviously I heard your answer to Alva, so I understand that, but did you not love that? Did you just want to go back to more of a community feel?
Yeah, so I explained to the chief, it's, I, you know, you think bigger and better things, you're in the big city again, it's a completely different animal. Growing up, like I said, I grew up second-generation police officer, third-generation public servant, and there's no community feel. They, we can, they, the department preaches community policing, but it's hard in that type of environment to really enact in community policing. You're not really interacting with residents, you're interacting with visitors, people you may never see. Yeah, we interacted on a daily basis with several thousand people compared to, you know, the busiest day here, whatever, you know, big event. But there is no community policing, the community feel's just not there. Closer to home, you know, it's hard to have a work-life balance when you're driving to the city, working 16 hours a day, and then coming home and doing it again the next day. Because I'm not one that shies away from work either, so.
Great answer. So we love that you are interested in community policing, because Essex is all about community policing. You'll see a lot of that here. Any further questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Fadulo to the position of full-time police officer for a partial three-year term, subject to drug and medical testing and any other requirements that the Essex Police Department requires.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
And the chief will work with you on a conditional offer, and then you'll, when all of that's done, you'll come to get sworn in.
Awesome, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Officer.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Consider authorizing a new grant contract with the Division of Marine Fisheries for green crab cropping. Trapping.
Brendan, how much was that this year?
Thirteen thousand.
Okay.
So I was told last week that this was probably coming, and it came late on Friday.
Yeah.
It's the same program we've participated in now for, I don't know, five or six years. And I have here the contract for the chairman's signature, so long as the board wants to go forward with the program.
Peter, I defer to you. I mean, it seems like this is very beneficial to our waterways, and honestly-
Yes, I mean, it is having an impact, not as much as it had hoped to make when it first started out, but we would be in much worse shape had we not had this. It was set up that the towns would, you know, start to take it over on their own after a while, but I think as it's been developed, the state has seen the problem is much bigger than they originally thought, so I think that's why they continue to fund this project, so. And just as a side note, I'm working with Bruce Tarr and a task force to try to develop some sort of a way to use these green crabs in a economic way that they'll be so, the markets will control the trapping of them. And we'll talk a little bit about a potential project for that a little later on, but yeah, I think it's definitely a good idea.
Great. Alva, do you have any questions for Peter? No? Okay. I will entertain a motion to sign the new grant contract with the Division of Marine Fisheries for green crab trapping.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, consider awarding a contract for improvements on the town's public water supply, did we get that?
So we did receive one bid today, and the reason that I have this on here is because if the bid came in so high that we didn't think we could make up the money needed to actually exercise the ad alternate, because remember, we did this with a base bid that we thought would be comfortably within the existing ARPA funds and an ad alternate. As it turns out, we got one bid, Weston and Sampson, the base bid at around $624,000, and the ad alternate around $337,000, so we're at around $991,000. We have about $750,000 in ARPA money, and so it doesn't seem beyond, beyond, I guess, possibility that Town Meeting will want to use the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to bridge the difference between the, you know, so $624,000, and if we're at $750,000, a hundred and a quarter will go toward the $336,000, so now we're talking at about $200, a little over $200,000. They do have it. I must mention that the engineer will have to add into that a contingency. But I think it'll work, and the reason I had it on tonight is if that ad alternate or the base bid plus ad alternate came in so high that it wouldn't be realistic, then tonight you would have just awarded the base bid. But it does seem plausible, we should at least see what happens at Town Meeting, and you actually can vote on that at your next meeting. I have it set up on your agenda to potentially take a vote to fund it so long as the measure happens, the measure at Town Meeting is passed.
Okay, great.
So that's just an update.
Okay.
It was one of these things, a timing thing, because the meeting agenda was last week, but the bid wasn't until today.
Excellent, thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider the approval of the revised position description for the Chief of Police and discuss commencement of recruitment. So everybody is in receipt of the email that was sent around with the changes to the job description in bold, and did, I don't know if anybody emailed you back any comments on this.
I had a few comments that I incorporated, and I incorporated a set of minimum qualifications because the existing position description did not have that section in it.
Were there any questions on the job description as it was sent around, other than the ones that he added in?
Nope.
No.
I appreciated it, he's very quick.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no questions. I will entertain a motion to approve the job description presented this evening.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commencement.
Yep, so since we know that there isn't going to be consideration of the statute for the authority of the police chief, that's not something that went on the Fall Town Meeting warrant, the preliminary screening committee can actually get started with applicants as soon as we can get an advertisement put together. The board has already gone over the places where you want to see an advertisement appear, and, you know, I suppose it could be something where, once we get that up there, we could have a preliminary deadline, I don't know, in a month's time or something like that, and then the preliminary screening committee can start to meet and report back to the Selectmen as things progress.
So can you just give me a high level of what the screening committee is gonna, you know, how many, is it public, you know, that type of?
Right now, it's just myself and the chairman, and so-
Then you put out a request to see if anybody wants to be on that committee?
At this point, the board discussed that and didn't want that, but it's something that could be done.
Yeah, I thought, I guess I forgot.
Did we talk about official police officer, not necessarily from Essex, but maybe to be on it as well?
We didn't talk about that.
We didn't, okay.
No, but those are possibilities.
Those are possibilities, sure.
I mean, now that we've gotten to the point where you know it's not a Town Meeting issue, and it's really time to start planning, especially with the chief's announcement where he'll be leaving a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
You know, we have to get in gear. So what's the board's preference on potentially having someone else?
I think it might be a good idea to have somebody from the outside, that it doesn't have to be a police officer, but somebody that's in that field of police and law enforcement that understands and knows the issues, because maybe there's something we're missing, or something we should be thinking about.
Well, how about if you all think about that between now and the next meeting, and you could make an appointment, and I can get started with the advertisement anyway?
Yeah.
I'll keep it moving.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll put that on the next agenda for consideration of adding a member to the preliminary screening committee.
Sure. And just as a reminder, every applicant that comes in will be presented to the entire board, and questions will be able to go back to Beezy.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I just thought there was, having, you know, somebody with some background, and be able to, you know, neither of you have been in police, right?
No.
No, we can do that.
Not yet, anyway.
I mean, we'll find somebody, I mean, the preference will be to not bring somebody in that's, you know, within the KPN communities. I think we're going to want to be a little bit more far-reaching than that, so that we can get a unbiased opinion on who we're interviewing, and hopefully, maybe the person you bring in doesn't even know the candidates, so that they're just looking at their resume, their letter of interest, and the actual interview process, so.
Yeah.
But not so far away that they don't want to come in for interviews, so I think we can work on that. I have, you know, no doubt that we'll find a few people interested. Consider a request from the Essex Lions Club to hold their annual Turkey Trot Event on Sunday, November 24th, 2024, from 9:30 till 1:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will entertain a motion to appoint Amy Akow to the position of Town Clerk as of November 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was there anything that was not anticipated?
Yes, we are going to be moving into the season where we'll be negotiating with the two labor unions, and after the agenda was posted, we did hear from the police asking to set up some preliminary dates for bargaining for a success or collective bargaining agreement. And I wanted to ask the board whether you had any preferences for liaisons from the Select, from the Selectmen at either one of the labor union processes that we're going to enter into. Ruth has done it in the past and has experience in it, but that doesn't mean another member couldn't become involved.
Ruth, if she's interested.
I'm happy to do it, I'm just waiting to see what Alva, what her preference is.
So I've been on negotiating with schools, so I just, Ruth, you have everything on your plate, that seems like a lot.
The nice thing about the union meetings are, they take place first thing in the morning at 7:00 AM. So we're there from 7:00 to 8:00, I still get to work on time, so that is the one upside to being on it. I don't mind doing it, it's not a heavy lift, it's just many, many meetings going back and forth, but it's completely fine. If you, do you want to do it, or do you want one or the other, or do you want me to take them? I'm happy to do both.
Yeah, why don't we split them?
Split them? Which one do you want?
It doesn't-
So there's the police, and then there's AFSMI, which is the DPW and all of the clerical employees.
I'll take the AFSMI.
Okay.
I'll have to do some educating.
I will entertain a motion to approve the licenses as listed on page two of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Some reminders, the board will attend a public hearing held by the Planning Board regarding the Essex zoning bylaw review project on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, starting at 7:00 PM here, third floor of the Town Hall. The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 5:15 PM in the Teachers Lounge of Essex Elementary School at 12-story street. And the Fall Town Meeting will take place on Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Gymnasium of Essex Elementary School at 12-story street.
And the Planning Board, the zoning bylaw review is Zoom as well, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Brendan, is there anything in your report you can cover in four minutes, or do you want to just pause for four minutes?
Yeah, I can, go ahead.
That's on Brendan's-
That's Brendan's report, and we have an appointment at 6:30 in four minutes, so.
So I would say this, with respect to the Gloucester coal tar pollution environmental settlement, Selectman Pippin and I attended a meeting recently where the trustees, which are NOAA, the DEP, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, highlighted the types of projects that can, that can be recommended to them, and I put together a whole list of things, and it would be, I think, advantageous for me to put some of them in, and then Peter may put some of them in, in his role as someone working with, working for the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. I don't know whether the other two members have specific ideas.
But anything goes, soup to nuts, project development, design, permitting, monitoring, implementation, no match, so anything's available.
It's to our advantage to put them all in, because they will consider as many ideas as we put in, and they have to determine how that might gel with all the other things that get turned in. We're hoping we at least see one project on, in Essex, from this $5.3 million settlement.
The money is supposed to be mainly spent, or is supposed to be spent as close to the damage site as possible, which is in the inner harbor in Gloucester, but knowing that that's a fairly congested, developed urban area, there probably isn't likelihood for any expansive restoration, so as you get a little bit further out, a 10-acre restoration will probably trump a half-acre restoration in closer, so. And they'll look at all that stuff, so anything is game, seems like, so that's why we sort of threw out this list of eight things here, and haven't stopped thinking. I think we have to, what, middle of December or something?
December 19.
Yeah, to submit an idea. It doesn't even, it's not a proposal, it's not a grant or anything, it's just throw some ideas down with as much information as you have, and you don't have to have a lot if you don't, so.
This list of eight seems like a really good start, but I always defer to you when it comes to the ocean and things that we're going to do, especially restoration projects.
And number seven is real interesting, because Wednesday, we're going to meet again with the people from, and that's, that's the other thing on my report, but I might as well bring it up now, the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization, as you know, is working on solutions, future solutions for the causeway in light of sea level rise and coastal flooding. We are going, they're going to loop in the person that works for DOT that has access to federal money that's known as the PROTECT grant, and there may be a way to leverage that relationship, because what they said was, if you have other grants out there that you can couple up with the coal tar settlement money, you get a bet, probably a better chance. And so that's a real interesting one, but again, we'll put them all in. I just wanted to highlight that because of the new connection that MPO has made with DOT in our, in our- in our in our current work. So is, if the board is fine with it, Peter and I will split up what needs to be put in and we'll get it all filed.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Alva, do you have any ideas that you wanna add? Or do you wanna leave it to Brendan and Peter to put those together?
I'll leave it to them.
Okay. All right. Mr. and Mrs. Woodman, it is 6:30. If you'd like to join us at the podium, when you speak into the microphone, if you can speak six to eight inches so that it's captured by the broadcast.
So it's Maureen and Doug Woodman, 94 Martin Street, Essex, Massachusetts, owners of Woodman's 119 Main Street. So we're here for discussion to see if we can get a yearly outside entertainment license for 2024. For 25.
25. So I have in the board, this folder's been passed around, so I think everyone has seen it. So I have your application, Maureen, that you started. That's somewhat incomplete in the sense that all of the other licenses that we have approved for outdoor annual events or licenses, they have kind of guardrails, some parameters around what what specifically they're gonna do. And kind of worst case scenario, and yours is just kind of open-ended, which is just amplified and non-amplified to be determined based on event, and we'll let you know, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So it's kind of a big window and it's also from Monday through Saturday. So there's no, which other restaurants have done, so that's fine. It's, I'm not questioning that. It's more that it's vague.
Sure.
And all of the other ones are much more specific. So I think for me, that's that's the one thing that I would say is some, to have a little bit more specifics on what the goal is.
But I, so what I understand, and I could be wrong, there's only one other place that has an outside yearly entertainment in town. I think that's CK Pearl.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So they're not multiple. And so when we filled in the application, Ruthie, what we did was we want, so let's go over why we're here. We're here for discussion, right? So first of all, I think that no one knew where we wanted to go. So let's clarify where we wanna go. We wanna go to the tent area at Woodman's, which is a 40 by 80 tent that's been up since 1972 that's completely permitted and put in through the town, so over 50 years. That tent usually goes up somewhere between May 1st and comes down somewhere between October 15th. Again, vague, depending on weather. The tent goes up in the spring if it's the right weather. And it has to come down if there's hurricanes. A lot of times it's come down early. Sometimes it stayed really late. The last few years, the weather's been great. We know now that we have tons of information after COVID, so we can see that people are still continuing to go outside. They're not going back in. So we feel like this is something good, right? We definitely know that there's a huge need for people to have dog-friendly entertainment, children, elderly, handicap, which our tent encompasses all those items. It's very easy. The parking's accessible. And four years ago, when we tried to get a yearly liquor license out there, we did all the things that you asked me to do as far as openings and closings and handicap parking and stanchions and all the stuff, lighting and emergency lights and exit lights. So all that stuff's brought up to speed. What happened this year when we tried to do the entertainment with the food truck by some strange act of God, every Wednesday rained out. So we lost 75% of the licenses that I filed for. And we put the entertainment in the top deck because I have a yearly entertainment license at the restaurant because the weather didn't cooperate. So my goal really is to be able to have entertainment and then have a rain date. For example, if it rained on Tuesday and I had the license, I couldn't put someone there Wednesday. I didn't have time to come back here because you have to come every two weeks or even a month ahead, I think we came mostly. Also, you have to advertise it. You have to market it. You have to make sure everybody knows. We had a really good turnout. When we had the turnout, we used Tom Yello's students from the music school. You know, we didn't go with amplified because we thought we couldn't go with amplified. Then we went through all those meetings up here where we could go with amplified. I don't know if all of them will be amplified. There's no need for an acoustic guitar to be amplified. So that's why I'm not putting it in if that's something that's irritating. I know that we will stop by 8 o'clock. That's a hard stop. I don't anticipate that we would go earlier than probably 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, but maybe on a Saturday if there was something special, if we did do an entertainment, we may go earlier on a Saturday. And then I think what I understand is Sundays are not included at all in the yearly. You'd have to file for separate. So say we had a special something or other on a Sunday, depending on how the Fourth of July goes, I'd be willing to file for an additional Sunday permit for the week of Fourth of July, depending on the fall, the way it falls. I think that we certainly did nothing to violate any of the rules. Anyone that came, I don't think you guys really came to a lot of the events there. They were very successful. People liked them. I didn't see any trouble. So that's where I'm at. I wanna be able to have people come. And really, I don't even think I really want yearly necessarily. I really want seasonal. And I don't know if you offer a seasonal permanent entertainment license. I think it's only the one day or the yearly, but I could be wrong.
No, you're correct.
So are you looking at doing what you were intending to do this year, which was one day a week or maybe two?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the market can bear. I don't know what we can afford. I don't, you know, we did very well with Tom Yello's kids. You know, some of those kids came in, we just gave them a tip or something. They came for free. They wanted to just play. I don't know if you're familiar. He runs a music school here in Essex.
Yeah.
So we're more looking for community. We're looking to support the community. We're looking to have this full feeling at Woodman's where you, you know, it's something for everyone. That's been our tagline since 2017 in marketing, that Woodman's has something for everyone. You can bring your newborn child. You can bring your great-grandmother. And everybody's happy at Woodman's. It's a family-friendly restaurant, you know. You guys can look up my alcohol sales because we pay the taxes there. We don't really sell a lot of alcohol. It's a food, family-friendly restaurant.
Do you think you're looking for six days a week or something less than that?
I don't know. I don't. I don't think so. I don't think we're gonna pay that kind of money. But if I wanted to have, I don't know if any of you went to.
In some particular week you might want.
Did any of you go to the event this weekend for ALS at the Grove? Nobody went. So they had the Headlands there, which is one of my favorite bands. And we had the Headlands three years ago. They're from Rockport, a local band that plays. And the Headlands like to have a low amp because they have a really good girl singer. So I couldn't have them, right, because of what what we had last year. And I would love to have them maybe once. They're very, they'd be pricey, right? A few years ago, we hired a big band like a, like a, kind of like a Glenn Miller band for the Fourth of July. Do you remember when we did that? So that would be like a daytime thing and people came from all over to hear that. So I don't wanna pigeonhole myself, Peter, necessarily, where I'm just going.
Sure.
You know what I mean? That's why we're here for discussion today, to see if this is something that you're going to allow us to go into have. I also don't wanna wait and go through this in the spring because it's too late. You have to hire these people ahead of time. Things are changing. Your community's changing. I think you guys are well aware of what's going on around here. I mean, it's pretty ghostly here right now. There's 50% of the stores are closed. You know, so we we wanna make sure that being the leader, which you guys have told me are the poster child for Essex in the hospitality industry, I think that's a fair statement, right? 110 years in business, that we are making sure this community stays alive right now while we're going through this severe transition of, I don't know what the word is, transition. And I think we're all well aware of it. I think enough is enough and it's time to see if we can go forward in 2025 and see what we can do to make everything go go forward again. I think you should look at your festivals. I mean, the the ALS Seldo, the Clam Fest was very successful, the car show that the police ran. So there's people that wanna come here. And then the restaurants, it was really ironic what happened on those days. The restaurants were flooded, but they couldn't even handle it because there's four restaurants missing. So everyone was so jam-packed, you know, because a lot of people go to festivals and then they go to the restaurants, you know. So there's just a lot going on. I think as a leader in the community that I I think you have to hear me what's going on here before it really, really does become footloose. I don't think that's what any of you want. I know you don't. I know that's not your intention.
Thank you, Maureen. And I just wanna point out, because it's important for everyone to know, that the board also has not denied a single amplified outdoor application in over four years. So just so that we're, you know, the board is working with any of the local business owners to make sure that they are having events.
How many of those have you had? How many amplified applications one day did you have last year?
10? Unfortunately, I don't have those numbers with me. We could certainly.
What do you think?
We could certainly get them for you.
Yeah. Not that many. Outside.
Outside, but still none denied.
Not counting ours, right.
None denied. My question for you is gonna be more about the alcohol with events. Generally, when you have, you know, an event, when Woodman's comes before us with any type of an outdoor event application, it's usually accompanied by an alcohol license. So how will that work? Will you?
I, well, I'll still go in for my one, I can't have a yearly. We already went through that because you want me to have the bathrooms, which I'm not gonna put in $300,000 worth of bathrooms. So we already solved that. I would probably apply for the one-day license, but we have events out there with no alcohol. So we don't have, it's, again, it's not really our vibe. Like I said, match the food sales tax to the meals tax to the alcohol tax. You guys can figure that percentage out pretty quick. It's not, it's not our, it's not our goal. Our goal is something for everyone. And everyone actually really isn't drinking. A lot of people aren't drinking anymore, if you guys have noticed.
It's more of convenience right now, anyway, just to offer something out there.
Yeah. It's a draw. It's a draw for the people.
One beer, usually.
Yeah. Even when we have the outside licenses, they they don't even barely pay for themselves or the employee and the stocking up and the ice and all the stuff that goes into it. So it's more to have, you know, if a guy wants to play a harmonica one day or we, it's just, it's a feeling. It's a feeling. I don't, I don't see myself going into, you know, major, well, first of all, alcohol sales are down. And I don't see them gonna go up. Everyone's not drinking anymore. And they have never drank at Woodman's.
I think they're drinking at home.
There's a lot of people stopped drinking. A lot of people are, you know, a lot of people went to gummies, so.
So I I think it's great because it doesn't say the tent area on the license request, correct?
So it doesn't say it on the license. I think we just need to firm up the license and more specifics on this. But it is identified on the drawing that we have, so we just need to make that go into the language. So I think that the request is not unreasonable. And having knowledge in advance makes perfect sense so that you can book things. I think we just need to work together on how we word the application. It's just a little vague. So something like, we will let you know in advance. We need to be clear, like we will email you two weeks in advance. Or, because we're saying tonight, you wanna know for next year, so you can book things, so.
Most likely, Ruthie, if if we go forward with this, what will happen is we'll start scheduling right around the first day of spring. And usually when we schedule things like this at Woodman's, our marketing is done three months out, usually in little quarters. So we'll hire somebody, then we'll do the the posting, then we'll have everything going, then we'll have the advertising match. Usually we do a calendar event, so I'm sure you guys have seen it. Again, we're doing it since 2017, something for everyone. It lists off month to month, Mother's Day, Memorial Day, Father's Day, you know, goes right down. And I think that I I'm even more than willing, you know, shoot up quick, like if the Headlands was gonna come and it's gonna be amplified, I'll come up, see Pam and say, okay, this one is amplified, you know, if I know. But the other thing that happens a lot in the entertainment when it's something like the music students, you might have thought you were gonna get the guitar player, which happened to us one night, but he got sick. And we ended up with the the vocal girl who had like a little drummer, you know. So so we could, it could pivot. It doesn't normally. But I'm, but I'm more than willing to, I'm always just driving by. I can pop up or send a quick email. This one is gonna be this. You know, just so you guys know, keep an eye on me or send another policeman down there to watch us. We know what we have to go for decibels. We understand that. We understand that we're gonna have a hard stop at 8 o'clock. I don't see it going any later. Nor do I want to, you know. The restaurant closes at 9 and 10, you know, it's only open till 10 o'clock, those whatever, 11 weeks, Father's Day to Labor Day or something. The rest is 9 and sometimes it's 8 in the spring. May and October, we're at 8 anyway, you know. So so there's a lot, there is a lot of vague things, I guess. But it's nothing vague that's gonna be bad. It's, it's, if anything, it's gonna be probably less than than more. Like Doug said, I'm probably gonna, he'll set me a budget. We'll go out, try to get the players and fit the budget. It's not my intention to go spend, you know, $50,000 on entertainment.
No, we're not, we're not promoters.
Yeah, so I think since it's a discussion, I I think the board all seems relatively in favor of the idea. I mean, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing at the table, everyone seems like we're willing to embrace this idea of planning for next year. Just with, for me, what I would like to see is, it says, we will let you know in advance. I'd like to put a timeframe, like we will let you know no less than two weeks in advance of an event. And then you'll just send an email to Pam that says, we're gonna hold an event on Saturday, blah, blah, blah. This event will be amplified. This event will not be amplified.
And if I could just add also, because if you are having a larger band where you think you're gonna try and draw a crowd, it's good to know that so that we can say, should we get police for that event?
Oh, definitely.
Type of thing.
We love police details on the weekend. I'm sure we, I'm sure we lead the crowd in that, too. We hired the most of them at the restaurant.
The other thing. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Bear with me for one second.
It's all right, it'll come back.
One times one is one.
You interrupted me and I lost what I was thinking. Amplified or not, two weeks' notice.
Seasonal or yearly?
It's it's an annual license. We don't have seasonal. But I think that the annual, Maureen, actually gives you more flexibility because if you're hitting the end of April and it's no longer raining and it's sunny and beautiful, you want the opportunity to do that. So I think that that's actually better for you.
It's important to note that the license is gonna have to have language in it that says, what are the parameters that are allowed? And, you know, is the board looking, would the board consider entertaining something that is a events that or or entertainment that fits within the existing policy is allowed? And events that go beyond that need to come.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Because we're gonna have to write something up, you know.
Especially if I do Sunday, Brendan. I'm gonna have to come back. Most likely, if I did a Sunday, right? The Sunday will be an exception to the the annual. And I would imagine, knowing the the business, Sunday would be daytime, most likely, be a different time range. Sunday would probably be bigger. Whatever it was, it would be more because it's Sunday. I don't think we'd have that noise pollution problem as much because I think if we did, it would be probably over at 4 o'clock type thing. You know, Woodman's is very busy on Sunday at 1, like 1 to 5. You know, that's like our real vibe on Sunday. And that would be more event specialized, again, like whether it's Father's Day, which is on a Sunday, Mother's Day on a Sunday.
Because I think you can get, you can get an annual Sunday, can you not, Pam?
Yeah, let's put that in there, too.
You could, so it's a different, separate application.
Yeah, because the Sundays are the holidays. The Sundays are the holidays.
Right. But either one of them, right, are going, I think the board should consider, what is something that you can do under either one of those licenses that you can just do without asking anything else versus at that, once you cross that threshold, what do you have to tell the board?
Okay.
Does it require a meeting or is it something where you just notify?
For example, you said, Maureen, you can have all your un-amplified for the year, blah, blah, blah. But if you do amplified, I wanna know. That's what you're saying.
Right, and the board already has a policy on on outdoor entertainment. So in other words, if what you're doing comports with that policy, then no discussion is required.
Right.
Once you go over that and it's outside of of any of those parameters, and amplification would be one of them, it's up to the board as to whether the board wants to allow.
I do think if we're gonna write the language, bringing that up, that because of what happened with the microphone and the awards for Raimi Rita and the party in June that started this whole mess, I think there should be a line in there that says, there could be a time with un-amplified music where there may be microphone speakers if it's an award ceremony. That would be something that should be in that language.
Sure.
And/or that would be something that I would have to identify to you ahead of time. So say I did a chamber event, for example, but I just had a little guitar player. He's doing nothing. But then we need, the the chamber needs to speak on the mic. I have to plug in. Kind of like what happened at the weddings at the Hall. I had acoustic music, but when the kids got married, they were amped. And then that was against the rules because they, you know. Because they, you know, they wanted to speak and let the people hear them get married. They were amped, but even though their harp player wasn't, the harp lady wasn't amped. So there is, so yes, that definitely should go in, because that's what got us in this beehive to begin with, was we had to use the microphone for those two events. And one was the chamber, actually, they were both chamber. I think Ramey was the Small Business of the Year, and the one was the ribbon cutting of the food truck. And that's where we had un-acoustic music, but they, they went, they spoke. And we needed it, because nobody could hear them.
Is there, is there a decibel limit that you, is set right now?
There is not. We do not have a noise bylaw in the town of Essex.
And that was actually what I was going to bring up, Doug, when I couldn't think. I was going to say, we need to make sure that part of it says that the noise won't leave the property.
That's right.
Shouldn't be heard beyond the perimeter of your property. Falling within the policy makes sense. And then also making sure that you've notated via the map, the, the drawing of the property, that it will be at the tent, but I think that that needs to be clear in the license as well.
It's in the tent area.
That it's in the tent, in the specific tent area, because you sometimes have two tents. You have the Salt Marsh tent and the other tent, the one, you have the...
I have an outside license at the Hall. The Hall has an outside entertainment license. The Hall is a separate license.
It has an outdoor annual entertainment license outside?
I don't think so.
Can we look that up, Pam? Didn't the Hall have it? We looked it up. Yeah, we can look that up.
Yeah, I think you came in and we discussed that, and there was no such license.
It's the liquor license and the, look that up, though, but you know what? Let's throw that in there, too, because in case we have a party down there and we want to go down there, might as well get, we've, we've got to get a separate one for there, let's get one for there, too. I'm willing to pay for that, too. Not that I think I'm going to use it, but let's have it. You know, because that's always a better place. If we did a chamber event, that's why we ended up down there, because the restaurant, I think there was a clam bake or something at our regular tent, and we had to bring Ramey's party to the, I call that the Corral, which is on my license of the functional. So that's a different, a whole different animal. The other thing, I think, if I'm not correct, how far away are the abutters for the violation? Do you know the feet?
Do you have the policy with you?
So I'm pretty sure if I check that, there is no abutter that is within the feet, other than Woodman's. Stephen Woodman Sr., Ian Woodman, and Stephen Woodman Jr. There is no other house in the parameter of the feet.
Yeah, I think that's just this...
Somebody look that up for me after.
It's five, I thought it was 500 feet from the line.
Yeah, there's no one there. The marsh.
From the line, from the property line?
So the, the tent, you're right.
Yeah, there's nobody there.
But I was thinking the function hall.
No, the tents. People brought that up to me, that we're, we don't even have an abutter at the tent.
I think that has to do with...
Just, just like coincidence.
Yeah.
Because if you think about it, it'll be the Apple Street and CK Pearl's parking lot.
Yeah, I thought I...
The gas station and Great Marsh. There is nobody. If you went 500 feet from there. So someone brought that up to me, actually, some, like, kind of smarty pants resident said, "You're not even near there," which I never even thought about.
I don't think the, I don't think the reference to that has much to do with an annual license. I think it's talking about...
The noise.
The noise. The noise, and it's also talking about people that abut you can send in letters of support and such, but that would be for a one-day event. All right, so...
Yeah, it says, "The applicant shall provide written notice of the hearing at least five days prior thereto to all abutters, abutters to abutters within 500 feet and any other property which may be affected by the proposed entertainment."
Right, but there would be no hearing unless the board is inclined to...
Decline.
...modify or decline your original request. So that doesn't come into play at all.
Okay, great.
So what I think I could do is I could put together some language, send it to the board, send it, send it to Woodman's.
Yeah.
That would explain what the base level threshold would be, and then I think the board is saying, anything over that, there would need to be notification of the board's office, what, two weeks in advance?
Well...
Not, not less than two weeks. Because again, I, my feeling is, is that if indeed we need to think about having a third officer on duty, that we are aware of it ahead of time and not at the last minute.
Is it simply notification?
Well, the issue is, I don't want to contradict the policy, which says 30 days, because we need to allow for a hearing if it's denied. That's the only downside.
This is a notification, though. This isn't...
It's not approved.
Well, okay, so this is what, this is why we have to discuss it, because if you're going to be doing an annual license, is it going to be that, in the license, it's, the parties are going to agree that if something is put forward that seems like it's too far beyond for the board, that it, that it can be denied and that the, that Woodman's would assent to that in advance? I don't know. But I think we need to put together some li, some language that everyone can look at, and then maybe even have you come back. I think you said you're going away for a while, but...
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll be, when, like, we'll be home November, December 12th, so we could...
Yeah, so this winter...
You say it's the 19th, December 19th is your meeting? Did I hear that tonight?
Uh...
No, December 19th, I think they said? 18th in December? December.
We didn't talk about...
December will be the 16th.
Yeah, we'll be home. So we could, we could come back in a month, right?
All right, so in the meantime, though, I think I can put something out there to give everybody an idea of what I'm talking about. Then you come back and talk informally again so that we can all hammer it out.
Yeah.
And then you come in with, "Hey, here's what I'd like to do," and if everybody has already talked about it, it shouldn't be anything that, that wouldn't just be approved by the board.
Okay.
In a formal sense.
So just to be clear, I'm going to go with a Hall, which is a separate license, which is 125 Main Street, seven, six days, plus a Sunday, two annuals at the functional, if I don't have them already, but Pam will check, because I think, Pam, we got one of them, I can't remember. Then we'll go to the Tent, which is 119 Main Street, we'll do the sixth day, as well as the annual Sunday. And then you guys come up with the language. And then, like I said, I'll go with the 30 days or the 20 days. My biggest problem could be that would happen, so say, say it was on a Monday, and it was an event or something, and it rained, and I had a rain date of Tuesday. I guess what I can do is try to put that ahead for the two weeks of the 30 days that you want me to do, so you would know that, okay, if there's bad weather, it's not going to happen on that Monday, it's going to happen Tuesday. So there's a few things like that, too.
In an annual license, I think it's going to be more about the concept of what's happening and not the day on which it happens.
Okay.
Because you have an annual license.
Okay.
Which is, you're trying to avoid signing up for one day, and then it rains, and then you don't have anything.
Exactly.
So I, I get what you're saying, and I think I can put something together in draft so that we can all discuss it.
And it's only one year. If we blow it, you don't get it next year, so...
Well, and it's, and Maureen, to your point, it's, it's a year, provided that none of the criteria are not met, right? So if you do something outside of the criteria that's listed in the license, that's when we would bring you in, have a hearing.
A violation, yeah.
Right, it would be a violation. You would come in for a hearing, we would discuss the violation, and we could revoke the license at any time. So not that that would ever be my expectation, I'm just saying that it's not necessarily...
I'm fine with that.
Can I just ask one question, though?
Sure.
As far as now that it's the two tents, you know, the two locations?
Yeah.
Do you think you'd ever have events happening at the same time at both of them?
Well, that's what happened the night of Ramey Rita. You had, and I think that, if, one, I can't remember what happened that night when we originally booked him. I think there was another chamber ribbon cutting or something in Gloucester, and that's how we ended up with that. Like, there was a bait and switch there. And I think the tent had something, the, the 119 tent had something, because we didn't have a tent up at the Corral. We just, we sat at the Corral. And we had to switch, like, it was a bait and switch. I can't remember exactly what, what reason now. But it's not my intention to, you know, but again, we did that for years. We had parties at the, every Saturday. Every Saturday for 26 weeks, I did a wedding at the Hall outside and I ran the restaurant, so it's not like something I hadn't done before.
So, Maureen, when you had weddings at the Hall, were those outdoor weddings for 26 years?
For, I probably started, looking back at that, it's a good question, Ruthie, I would say we started outside weddings around 97.
97.
97.
And did those...
But people kind of switched from going to church, and all of a sudden, they were all getting married outside, is what happened.
So were they, when, going back to 1997, when you had the weddings at the function hall, were they, were the outdoor licenses amplified or the outdoor weddings amplified?
Back then, we didn't even have to go. We didn't start having, and I don't know why, maybe we didn't know, I don't know, maybe we weren't serving alcohol. A lot of times what happened since then is, we would do a ceremony, and then we did what's called an outside cocktail hour. So that's how that license got in there originally, the Hall, and people would stay outside and just maybe, you could only have beer and wine out there. So they would go in, but 90% of the time, everyone went in because it was either too buggy or too hot, or they didn't really stay outside. But we started that, and then it just became that it was a beautiful space for an outside ceremony, so a lot of people really booked the Hall because they could have their wedding there, because they didn't want to go to church. So it just kept morphing, but I don't remember, and Pam, again, will go back, I, I don't think I did those licenses with Faye Broderick, and Faye's been gone now for, she passed away in 217, you know, it was with Lauren Sweet that we started doing those licenses. We didn't even have to get a license back then.
So for outdoor amplified...
Probably before your time, Ruthie, that we didn't have license outside.
Majority of the dancing, they, they all moved inside. They, they only had like a string quartet or something outside for the ceremony.
Acoustic guitar, sometimes a keyboard, sometimes they would have a keyboard. We didn't even have electricity out there.
What I'm trying to get at, Maureen, is Woodman's was having outdoor amplified music...
Yes.
Previously.
Yes.
With no complaints.
Correct.
And in my time, and Doug, Doug and I chatted about this just a couple of weeks ago, I know of only one complaint ever, which was taken care of immediately.
Right.
So I'm, I'm aware of that as well. But I was trying to get to the function hall, if during these weddings, you were having outdoor amplified music...
Yeah.
And there weren't complaints.
Never.
So, okay.
And remember, the one that there was the complaint on, if you really look into what happened that night, that...
One of the bridesmaids took a speaker outside to dance under the stars. I remember it like it was yesterday.
And the DJ didn't, the DJ didn't undo his equipment when he went in. So he was the same DJ that did the ceremony, and he left his equipment there, and that's how she got it.
And by the time I had texted Ian at 10 o'clock at night, Doug was already there yanking it out of the amplifier, so, yes.
So it's really funny what happened that night, but yeah, no, we did, like I said, 97, that's probably if I had to go back when it started. But before that, they mostly got married in the church.
Okay. So I think that Brendan has a good idea of the conversation at the table. We're all on the same page. He's going to put some language together for you to digest and see if it works.
Yeah.
And then I think probably you'll end up going back and forth some, with some iterations of that, and then it will make its way to us and we can have another discussion.
And then we'll, we'll put you, if Pam puts me on for discussion for December 16th, I'll put it in the calendar, and then we'll come back. I think that's Monday, right? It's a Monday. And we'll be home. Thank you.
Are you, Maureen, are you gone on December 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. So the 16th, we'll list it as probably still an informal discussion, unless there's been enough back and forth that we feel like it's ironed out?
I've got plenty of time. Like I said, I won't hire anything, most likely, unless something comes up, till somewhere in March.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you both for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience with this.
Have a good evening.
It's going to work.
Night.
Dan is tabled. Dan Mayer?
He's not coming in. He's going to bring that in at another time.
I know. So Brendan, tell you what happened. So, so tell Brendan, so Ali goes across the street from me. Tell Ali what the street light's supposed to look like. So when I left tonight, I looked, first of all, there's no streetlights on the street except the one we own. I, I can't find the light that you're talking about. Is it one out here?
Yeah.
But there's not one other light on Martin Street other than ours. There's no light.
There's, there's not a lot of lights, only...
It's only, only those that pay for it.
So now we found out that it's not by the town, and we think the boy did a ticket. It fits.
Yeah, that's paid for by them, so it was never turned into an LED.
If it's one out here, then it's, then it's yours.
Yeah.
You want to be in this town?
Yeah, you'll see, it's like a whitish light. It's way different than the sodium light.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Pam, we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Our 7:00 appointment, Mr. Mayor, has tabled and will be joining us in December, so that is no longer going to be discussed this evening. And Brendan, we just have review of the draft fall town meeting motions.
And we also have the, well, I'll, I'll cover this, the technical assistance from the Boston...
Oh, MPO.
Yeah, Metropolitan Planning Organization. I just wanted to say here that we were waiting for the MPO to say whether they were going to not only provide a scope, but actually implement the project. They have decided that they are going to implement the project. So what you have in front of you is an outline of what they're going to start doing. They're going to be adding to that specific language on bringing mass DOT into the mix. And as I said, this week, we're going to start the process of talking to somebody from DOT. So it's coming together really well. I mean, they've, they've done the traffic counts, and you see the different things that they're going to look at to get to recommendations. That was all I was going to say there.
Yeah.
Great.
And it's not going to be a quick process by any means.
No.
But at least it's starting. But at least it's starting.
So with respect to the town meeting motions, we have Article 1 being past unpaid bills from past fiscal years. That may be, somebody from finance, I put the chair's name in there for now. We then move into the zoning definitions article and then the zoning districts article, Articles 2 and 3. I don't know whether the chair herself will be reading those or some, you know, there might be someone else involved from the planning board, but I will review that prior to finalizing the motion. Somebody from conservation will then read Article, motion for Article 4, which has to do with spelling out the different fees with respect to the, the Wetlands Protection Act and the conservation's management of that. Article 5, I will see whether Dan Dussette wants to read that. I'll talk with the chief reader about it. That's for the new ambulance, about $480,000 and they do have enough in the ambulance fund to buy that outright. Article 6 has to do with two new police vehicles for the police department. Right now, we're working with a figure of 141, but that could change depending on which vehicles are proposed. And to fund this, one thing that I had suggested is we could use the money from the streetlight project that's not going forward anymore and transfer the money in this. And speaking with the chair of the finance committee, she indicated that they may want to use all $263,000 that was in one of those street lighting appropriations and put that into the OPEB fund. So we would use free cash and perhaps some of the money from the first appropriation, which we're going to have like $76,000 left. So the, the mix of funding here, we're not sure on yet, but it will firm up between now and when these are finalized. I don't know if you have discussion on the vehicles at this point in time, but right now, the motion just says two vehicles, so it could leave it open. It's the amount of money that's going to be important because if you're expecting to get one of these and one of those, you need to have enough money for one of these and one of those.
And so the streetlight funding can be used for pretty much anything then? Is that-
It, it can be, because it came from free cash. I think the, the finance committee would like to see it put into OPEB.
Right.
And then the smaller amount used in capital, so that we don't actually hit our free cash, which is a little lower this year for those things. And it keeps the free cash, cash stronger-
Yes.
-through the fall town meeting. I don't know if you had any questions on that one? Article 7 is the new pickup truck with plow for the water department. That comes from the Water Enterprise retained earnings, so it's not general fund. With respect to the design for a fuel depot, municipal fuel depot, we've been told by two companies that $25,000 should do it. There's another company that's coming in a little bit higher, but where I'm hearing that a couple of companies would do it for 25, I think that's a reasonable number. Then the Computer Connection Hardware System, 7500. We also move on to what we talked about earlier, which is a certain amount of money, and I'm going to have a calculation from the engineer tomorrow, a certain amount of money that will help supplant the ARPA money to get to the full scope of work that we just got a bid on today, the $990,000 total. Okay? 750, we know, we have in ARPA money, it's going to be that delta that we'll see whether the town wants to spend a sizable amount or, of the water retained earnings to bridge the gap. If not, then we go back after town meeting and we just do the base bid and we spend the remaining ARPA money on just regular bills of the town, so that it gets spent prior to the deadline, which is the end of this calendar year. Article 11 is the match to the environmental earmark that we're, that we're going to be getting from the state, which is 20,000. And the Lake Association is asking Hamilton and Essex to put up 15,000 each, two years in a row. So that would bring it, you know, 60 in town funding from the two towns, plus if we get another 20 next year, that's 40 in state funds, so it'd be 100,000 over two years. I am going to be getting an update on Hamilton's status of their willingness to put in the 15,000 later this week.
Does anything change if they decide they're not going to put anything into it?
Well, that would be up to whether the board wants to recommend the, the town still be putting in, you know, 15,000.
But do Hamilton already have their town meeting, their fall town meeting?
I think it's something that's coming up, is it, it could even be this week. Because I got it, I got an, I got an email from Dave Lash that he's going to follow up with me after that. Then we have Article 12. This is for the various special accounts where we put money away, special stabilization accounts.
Will these, will the finance committee adjust these accordingly if they don't feel that some of these are appropriate? Or have these numbers been confirmed and they-
They're not confirmed, so I always put in 20,000 as a placeholder and the finance committee is probably going to back off on some-
Okay.
And increase on others.
Some of these look like we should back off on some and increase on others.
Yeah, that's, and, and there'll be a, a lot more money, we think, put into the purchase of vehicles fund, so we keep that account healthy when we need new vehicles.
Yeah, and they, so they decided that using the street lighting, whatever, for OPEB? And where were we at OPEB, are we?
So they have not decided yet to direct the street lighting funds to that. It's an idea that the chair has and she's going to bring it up in one of their, in a meeting that's going to be between now and, and fall town meeting.
And, and I know that you've given us a, a document that shows what's the totals they need.
It's like 4 million something is the goal for OPEB. And we're at, it's on the sheet, we're at 26 right now.
In one of the conversations, Alva, because I asked about that, 263, was that there was so much controversy around the streetlight project in that 263 that was voted at town meeting, that having it transfer over, because it's trackable, it's not like a little bit here and a little bit there, it's, and we always, well, not always, but we've been funding OPEB at big numbers, like 175, 200, 250. So because we're trying to reach our goal, the thought process was, you take that whole lump sum of money and it shows residents that go search for that number. It was appropriated at this particular town meeting and it was reallocated at this town meeting, dollar for dollar. So that it's a, from an optics perspective, it just makes sense. People can visualize.
I just, I'm a little concerned with the school and us, you know, whether we have a construction project, building or a, you know, renovation, everything's going to go up. And so my thoughts would be to, to split it between two major ones. And to me, a school, the school is the major one. But that's just a comment.
You mean, by school, you mean?
We have a fund here for the school, correct?
Oh, yes, but I'm not sure, I don't know whether they're even recommending to put any more in that. It's about 50,000 in it right now.
So there's a reason though. So putting money into these stabilization accounts become problematic down the road because this isn't necessarily funded, but once you take this money out to fund it toward the school, you always have to do that. So you end up negative by that amount the following year. So if we take that $50,000 out of the stabilization account, let's say at fall town meeting, we were to take the 50,000 out of that special account and we put it into the school budget. Well, then next year, for that operational account, you need not only that 50 that you used, but an additional 50 to keep it funded. So there was, the intent of this special account was extremely, we, we had great intentions, but when we thought about the mechanism, we realized that it was always going to be a little bit of a problem. So it's great for a capital thing, like putting the money in there and paying for the turf fields, perfect. Using it toward operational could get problematic.
Yeah, I was thinking capital. Okay.
All right, well, that's something you should definitely talk to the chair of the finance committee, because they'll, they'll be having discussion on it coming up soon for, to make their recommendation. Article 13, I still don't have from the DPW what they want to use from wastewater enterprise retained earnings. This is a placeholder number to go towards the grinder pumps. I'm sure they'll be giving me a number soon.
Is that's what it's been in the past, roughly?
It's been 50,000, but they got so little back in retained earnings this year. Like, only 56,000, they can't-
Yeah, right.
Can't do that. Article 14 is simply replenishing the finance committee's reserve fund from the dredging match fund, because the, the reserve fund paid for the moving of the moorings. Article 15, this is where I had split it up among different sources, but we may get a recommendation from finance that OPEB should be funded simply with that $263,000 streetlight appropriation. With respect to the wage and salary scale, I believe this whole thing is going to be indefinitely postponed. We have found out that the shellfish constable, although he is a department head, although he does supervise some employees, he does not supervise enough full-time employee equivalents to actually be adherent to the change in law regarding salaried employees. So there's no need to do that. There's no need to, at this time, change the upper limit of the town clerk. And so that's going to come off. So it will be indefinitely postponed. And then the final article just has to do with funding various line items and accounts to make them whole for the end of, for the rest of the fiscal year. And those numbers are not final, there might be other things that come up when calculations are run by the accountant and the finance committee, but this is a good representation. And I did put, let's talk about selectmen reading motions. Let's see, Article 6 is the police vehicles. Is that something you wanted to do Ruth?
Sure.
Article 8 is the fuel depot. I put Ruth, but it could be anyone.
Happy to do it.
All right. I put down Peter for nine, which is the computer systems.